The little red cherries are slowly getting taken away from the shade.
I love the distance between.
Excellent, thank you. While people are checking in, I will make a few introductory remarks. And the first one is to remind you that, thank you for coming here to be part of the legislature and voting today. If you did not check in, if you do not have a blue card, your vote won't count. Please head back to the line and check in and get your blue card if you don't already have it. And I want to thank everybody for being here. You were warned. We sent text messages, phone calls, robo calls. We even canceled 911 for part of the afternoon, let you know it was going to be hot, it was going to be sweaty, it was buggy, and look at you. You're still here. So, we have a word for people like you. That's volunteers. And you are here as our formal volunteer legislature, right, for this town. You are why we're able to pass and have a budget, pass bylaws, pass resolutions. Nothing happens in the town without the convening of this meeting. And so I really thank you for being here to care about the town, but also for caring about representative democracy. There is no representative democracy if there's no one here representing. And so I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate you volunteering your time tonight. If you would like to do more, and perhaps even on nights not outside in the heat, 95 degrees, there are many other volunteer opportunities available to you. Everything from the Energy Committee to Historical Commission alike, you can get a rundown of availabilities from the town clerk here today, or at any other time that they're open. And I also especially want to call out two volunteer groups. Volunteer as in completely unpaid, whose work is important, essential, challenging, and rewarding. The first of these is the Planning Board. And I'd like anyone who's from the Planning Board now to stand, please, for acknowledgement. Many of these members have served for a very long time, and they're looking for you to relieve them. So please be in contact. The Planning Board meets fairly regularly, and so there's an opportunity for you to go before them and discuss what would be involved at one of their meetings. And Brad Checkes is the person to talk to, to arrange that. The other group I want to acknowledge is the Finance Committee, over here, literally in the. Their work is more episodic, but it's intense when it's there, and it's essential to the functioning of the town. If you would like to be, if you could see yourself represented here, or even if you don't see yourself represented here and think you should be, please be in touch with me. And again, you can talk with a member of the Finance Committee to find out details of what's really involved, to make sure that you have the time available, and the sense of the reward that you can get from it. So I'm very appreciative of all the volunteers for the town that helped this function. At this point, then, I believe we can, let me outline what we're going to be doing for the rest of the meeting. With the most important note being that sunset is at 8:30. And so the meeting will be structured to be done by then. And that may require me to exercise a prerogative I don't usually invoke, which is setting a time limit on discussion of some items. And I'll let you know what that is when that comes to it. You are always free to override me with a two-thirds vote beyond the time involved. And then, to expedite things, and because it is a very hot day, we're going to mostly follow our tradition of not reading word-for-word each of the articles that are here. However, I have been asked for some of the more complex ones, and the ones that are a little involved, for a reading to happen. For those, I will ask for the first introductory paragraph to be read in full. And I will also be asking representatives of the committees putting forward these measures to be able to step up to the podium to answer any questions you might have in that regard. You are also free to ask for any of the articles to be read in full, should you wish. The first seven, eight of these, however, look like boilerplate. I won't be asking for them to be read beyond Article One, Article Two, but they are the essential boilerplate. What they are is what enables the town to function. Because you're the legislature, our executive committee, our Select Board can only act if you vote them the powers to do so, and give them the budgetary authority and some limited voting authority in between meetings, so that we don't have to come and convene as a group for every action that takes place. And so these first seven items are the things that say we believe in town meeting system of government, in the Select Board authorization, and the powers that we give our executive officers to execute our wishes during the year. So, the first of these articles, however, will motion, and then I'll invite Fred Barron to step up to introduce our new town administrator, not a volunteer, but very much welcome, and to move the town report. Do I have a motion, please, for Article One?
I move that the town vote to accept the annual reports of the officers of the town, and to hear any other reports of the boards and committees.
On second.
Can I, I've got a couple of comments. One, I just want to.
I think there's something about reading the warrant.
We didn't formally, oh my goodness, oh my goodness. This is actually rather important. It used to be that attendance was compulsory, and so the constable had to go out and warn you, because you could be fined and imprisoned if you didn't show up. And it seemed that we ought to at least let you know that might happen. We no longer fine and imprison you, but we do still warn you, and we must notify you that you have been so notified. So, with that, please, I turn to the town clerk for the notification.
How do I turn this on?
They turn it on.
Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Waitley by posting attested copies of the same at the Town Office Building, Post Office, Transfer Station, and S. White Dickinson Memorial Library in said town seven days at least before the date of the meetings as within directed. Signed, Kristen Visa, Constable 6324.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Fred, will you please?
I will repeat.
Okay.
I move that the town vote to accept the annual reports of the officers of the town, and to hear any other reports of the boards and committees.
Is there a second? There's a second for Article One?
If I can have a couple of comments. One, I just want to make everyone aware that there is water available, I believe in the blue cooler over there, for anyone who wants it. That is, it's back here, okay.
There's some over there.
Okay, but. There is.
There's some over by the check-in table.
Okay, there's water by the check-in table for anyone to take who feels they need it. I want to call your attention, the annual report, to the dedication to Scott Jackson, who has served the town for many years as, Scott, can you stand up? Thank you. Many great years on the Conservation Committee. I want to also call your attention to Pete Kane, who's working, who's walking right here, is our new town administrator, started yesterday. And finally, I wanted to thank Tricia Vincenzi and Lynn Sibley for the amazing work they have done in filling up, filling in as interim town administrator, postponing their retirements to serve the town of Waitley. Thank you very much.
Having had discussion, all those in favor of Article One, please raise your card. All those opposed, the motion carries. May we have a motion in favor of Article Two, please?
I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer.
You can simply move Article Two.
Oh, I understand. Thank you. I move Article Two.
Second.
Article Two has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, did we vote to not read the Article, the warrant articles?
It's my prerogative. If you'd like, we can have the people vote.
It's fine. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Two, raise your card. All those opposed, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article Three. Second.
All right. Article Three has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, all those opposed, Article Three carries.
I move Article Four.
Second.
Article Four has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, Article Four carries.
I move Article Five.
Second.
Article Five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, your cards. All those opposed, Article Five carries. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move we take up Article Six.
Okay, for Article Six, starting with Article Six and Seven, I would like the introductory paragraph to be read, please.
I move that the town vote to establish spending limits for the town's revolving funds, as established by the town's General Bylaws, Chapter 46, revolving funds, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as follows. And then you have a chart in front of you.
Second.
Article Six has been moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Six, raise your card. All those opposed, Article Six carries.
I move the town vote to fix the salaries for compensation of the elected officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as follows on the list in the warrant.
Second.
All right, Article Seven has been moved and seconded. Is there questions or discussion? All those in favor, then, please raise your card. All those opposed, it carries. All right, and our last budget allocation item, before we talk about the main budget itself, Article Eight.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $258,540, or any other sum, or sums of money, from the Water Department Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, as follows, and please see the chart in your handout.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Article Eight has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion regarding any of the dollar amounts here? Yes, please. Please stand up, go to a microphone, so that, since you have something to say, let's make it something we can hear. Please identify yourself, just by your name and your address.
Hi, this is Beth Lucan from Seven Mitchkowski Circle. I just have a question about whether the Water Commissioners are recommending this.
Is there someone from the Water Commissioners who can address that, or the Select Board?
It says right here on the warrant.
Okay. Yes, down in print at the very bottom, recommended by the Water Commissioners.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, are there other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article Eight carries. We're now moving on to the main budget, and I'd like to introduce, again, Finance Committee Chair Paul Antea, both to move the article and to explain the budget process this year, and to walk us through the items in this article. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. The article will be read by the Vice Chair, Tom Maha.
I move that.
Just bring it a little closer to you, it's out there. They'll turn it on.
Okay. I move that the town act on the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the fiscal year 2025 town operating budget, and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, money for the operation of the town's departments, boards, committees, agencies, and officers, for the payment of debt service, and for all other necessary and proper town expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, in the amounts shown in the column captioned Fiscal 2025 Operating Budget, as follows.
Second.
Good evening. Just a quick discussion on the process that we go through, beginning sometime in January, February, and obviously ending now. We've, we have a number of new members on the committee itself, and we're really happy to have them. We want to just say thank you. We work closely with our town administrator. And as you know, our town, our previous town administrator left, and was, that space was filled by Trish and Lynn, and we couldn't thank them enough. And, you know, the wisdom of the Select Board to find these two individuals to take up the slack was extremely helpful. Okay, so I will go through this department by department, and if you have a question, please ask, okay? We encourage questions. Okay, so general government. We have a 9.26% increase, for a total dollar increase of $52,264.9. Their budget for 2025 will be $616,535.49. Any questions, comments?
Neil Abram, 184 Chestnut Plain Road. My question is, who knows how much was spent in each of these categories, and whether the original budget or the proposed new budget is related appropriately to the actual expenditures in each account?
The individual that knows that is called the town accountant, and that person is in Greenfield. We, they give us updates as to the percentage of the actual budget that has been spent and what's been left. We do take that into consideration, but more often than not, what's taken into consideration are the needs of the functioning of the town, along with the impact to the tax rate. And I just have to say that, at the end of the whole process, what we've done historically is, through, with the town administrator, have an ability to look at a spreadsheet and tell if, by adding to the budget, subtracting from the budget, how it's going to affect the tax rate, to a certain extent. Because what we do is we use what we received from state and federal the year before, and figure that it should be relatively stable. It's not a perfect science, but that's how we approach it. Thanks, Neil.
Other questions?
Hi, I'm Jenny, 186 Chestnut Plain Road. And perhaps related to what we spent, there's, to me, I see four items in here that changed significantly, three up and one down. Can we get an explanation why the proposed change is so much different than what it's been before?
Okay, could you identify those line items?
Treasurer Collector, Board of Assessors, Information Technology, and Conservation Committee.
Okay, so we have to start with the, you were, you have concerns, you have questions, and a 31% increase for the Treasurer Collector. It's my understanding that we combine those jobs?
The Treasurer, whoops, the Treasurer Collector actually received a considerable pay raise in comparisons to other towns in the area, and a lot of it is that. And other parts of it is just the costs of sending, the costs of the various programs that she needs to, for billing purposes and things like that. These things all have gone up, as everything has gone up, so that's pretty much why that increased.
Okay, the next one is, you had a question about the Board of Assessors, with a 22.42% increase, $10,795. That could have, is he here?
Fred is here.
Fred?
Fred Orlosky, 154 Christian Lane. I'm Chair of the Board of Assessors. Reason our budget went up so much this year is, I don't realize, I don't, I don't know how many of you realize that a longtime assessor of 31 years, working for the town of Waitley, retired this May of this year. So we, we had to hire another assessor to take her place. We advertised the position for several months. We interviewed about six or eight people. They all needed training, that weren't qualified to automatically do the work. We also had one consultant company that was qualified, was doing work in the assessing field for neighboring towns, that was interested in helping Waitley. And that's what we ended up doing, going with this assessing company. And that's why, one reason why the budget was so much higher.
Great.
We had to, we had to pay for their increase in salaries, which was more comparable, more than what the town position had before. But in the place of that, we were getting some additional services, that we had to hire private consultants to do during the year. So the $58,000 is what we feel is a reasonable amount. That probably will continue in the future, but that's, we were stuck with that option. That was the only thing we could do, is hire this consulting company to help us.
Thank you, Fred, for that clarifying, detailed clarification.
Thank you. And just to underscore what Fred said, as we go through this budget, when you're looking at positions within the town, and if in fact those positions have increased terms of salary, you got to understand the environment that we are in, and you'll see it every day. It's a very competitive environment to bring qualified people into these, into these positions. Okay, all right, we'll move on. Cultural Recreation Services, they have an increase of 4.86%, $8,671. Their 25 budget will be $187,200. Any questions, comments?
Branch Shike is 25 Gray Oak Lane. Paul, I apologize, but I believe the previous questioner also asked about the Conservation Commission dropping significantly.
Yeah.
So I'd like to return to that, please.
I dropped the ball, and I forgot. Thank you very much. Well, fortunately, we have our conservation person here, and he's more than willing to step up to the mic and field that.
Yes, I'm Scott Jackson, 340 Haydenville Road, and I'm happy to say that my budget is being cut for this year. I know that sounds weird, but if you remember, last year, the budget was noteworthy, because I think we set a record for percentage increase in a single year. And that was because we were working with several other towns in the area to create a shared conservation agent that would provide support for the Conservation Commission in our town and in the other towns. And the good news is that we've been successful, not so much in hiring somebody yet, but with the leadership of the town of Asheville, we put in a grant proposal to the state, and funding for the first year of that shared agent will be paid for by the state grant. So we don't need the money this year in FY25, but we will be back next year when we have to pick up the tab. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Let me just check in.
Go ahead.
At this point, ma'am, have all your questions been satisfactorily answered? Is there one remaining? Could you remind us what that is, please?
Information Technology.
Information Technology, please.
Information Technology.
Okay.
I think that, that one was a combined. We combined a couple of items. Information Technology is including a whole bunch of different categories. Some of them are, as you may know, we have hybrid meetings with Zoom, Zoom services, so that, there's a cost to that. It also includes like the Connect CTY, which is the robo-call system for the emergency messages. That used to be a separate line item, now it's combined into this category. Plus, the Zoom services actually went up for the following year. I, you know, they're, and then we also have the website for hosting the website. I'm trying to think of the other categories that are all under that. It kind of lumped a few things that used to be individually listed on the budget into one category.
Does that satisfy you? Yes, we're good?
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's return to Cultural Recreation Services. Again, 4.86% increase, $8,671, for total operating budget of $187,200. Question?
Chikis again, keeping on this theme of asking about some big changes.
Okay.
We're an aging population, so local council on aging is dropping by, well, small dollar amount, but 49%, so curious?
Yes, true. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we also have South County Senior Center. So much of the, I believe, much of those services are being handled at that end. So the small, local services are not going away, they're just being handled by them.
Joyce Palmer-Fortune is the Select Board Representative to the South County Senior Center. Invite her to add any additional clarification.
I agree completely with, with Paul. The Council on Aging's haven't done as much as the South County Senior Center, because the South County Senior Center has staff, has a director, and two awesome employees, and the director is awesome. And if anybody's not been over there, you should definitely check it out. They're doing more and more each year. There are more and more people turning up and just, they very well deserve the 19.09% increase in their line item for all the things they're doing.
Brant, you good? Okay. We're going to move on to Public Health. Public Health has a 17.03% increase for $17,429, a total of $119,772. Public Health. Any questions, concerns, statements? Okay. I don't see anybody. Okay, let's move on to Public Safety. Public Safety has a 9.54% increase, $46,592, for a total budget of $534,915. Any questions regarding the Public Safety Department? Yes, no? Okay, all right. We'll go on to Public Works. Public Works has a 7.08% increase, $32,139. The total operating budget will be $485,878. Any questions regarding Public Works? You good? Okay. We will move on to Insurance and Benefits. Insurance and Benefits has increased by 8.35%, which translates to $70,730.90, a total budget of $917,637.90. Questions? Comments? You good? Okay. And then we have our unclassified. Little group over to the right. They have an increase of 400, 4.41%, $3,197, a total of $75,722. Anybody have any water?
Yeah.
I'm getting dry.
Thanks, Sues.
Also, please be advised, elementary school is open for bathrooms and also for drinking water inside.
Yep.
Please exercise caution.
Okay, back to unclassified. Any questions on the unclassified group? You good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, moving on to Education. The education schools here have a 4.59% increase, for a total of $149,846. Their budget in '25 will be $3,412,426. Any question, comments, thoughts on the educational budget here in town? Thank you very much. No? Okay. The last then will be the Debt Service. Debt Service for '25, we have, there's no difference, there's no increase. The total is $49,660. That is our debt regarding excavator and other equipment for Keith's group. So, any questions regarding the unclassified? Okay. So we have a total town operating budget of 6.33%, $380,865.39, a total dollars of As we work this out over time, at the end of the day, when we left, given what the state and federal gave us from last year, we're projecting a rate increase of less than $1 per thousand, and yet maintaining all services in town and more. So that's where we are.
Good job, finance committee.
Thank you, Paul, for the detailed accounting, and thank all of you for the questions about the budget here. It's important that we know exactly what's, what's going on in our budget here before we approve it. And so I opened up to any general questions about the budget as a whole. Seeing none, oh, Brant, please go ahead.
So just to, Branch Hykes, 25 Gray Oak Lane, just to comment on town employee salaries. I can't speak highly enough about our town employees and the work they do and their dedication. And I feel like we're getting tremendous value out of this team, and I'm glad we're paying them what they need to stay. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to give you all an opportunity to applaud our tremendous value. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to a vote then. All those in favor of Article 9 in the budget just presented, please raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries with one exception, and we can move on to Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to transfer $225,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2024.
Second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there questions or discussion? Please, sir, in the back.
Hi, John Edwards, 16 Swamp Road. My only question is, I'm wondering what the total free, before we take up all the items on free cash, what is the total in free cash currently? And basically, if we were to pass all of these items, what would the free cash be left at if all were to pass? So that we understand where we would be after this? And also, how does that compare to last year?
Do you understand the question?
Yeah, and I didn't bring that, but my, my recollection is there was $790,000 or something in free cash. And once we're done, if everything passes tonight, there'll still be $140,000 in free cash.
And how does that compare to last year?
About the same. We try to aim for pretty much the same amount each year remaining in free cash, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Additional questions? Neil, yes?
Neil Abram, 184 Chestnut Plain Road. I'm curious why it is that the Board of Assessors has the authority to move money out of free cash? Why is it not the Select Board that is authorizing the movement from free cash in order to reduce the tax levy? I would have thought that the free cash was supervised by the, either the Treasurer or the Select Board, so I'm curious about how the Board of Assessors has authority to move money out of free cash.
Basically, the Board of Assessors do the, would reduce the tax rate by that amount recommended on the tax, when they complete the tax rate process. The Selectmen do have authority to approve that and recommend something different, but it's, you're giving the authority to the assessors to apply that when they complete their tax rate forms.
And just to clarify, you here, we here tonight are the ones that would be authorizing or not authorizing the expenditure. Any additional questions?
So just to clarify that I understand this, in the previous article, we voted to approve an increased town operating budget by roughly $381,000. And this article is going to effectively reduce that increase by 225.
No, it'll, the budget will be the same, oh, sorry, please go ahead.
I really meant with respect to how this impacts property owners for tax purposes.
The $6,399,000 budget has already been reduced, or the, the tax part of it is going to be reduced by this 225,000. If we didn't use the 225,000, it would be like a dollar and a half increase instead of a dollar.
All right, does that satisfy? Okay. Any additional questions or clarification sought? If not, let's please move to a vote on Article 10. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article 10 is passed by the majority vote required.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to the Vehicle Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Well, for the Vehicle Stabilization Fund, moving right along. Shall we, all those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, all right, Article 11 has passed by the majority vote required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions, discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote, please. All those in favor, Article 12, raise your card. All those opposed, Article 12 has passed by the majority vote required. We're now moving on to a set involving capital project appropriations. I'll ask that the explanatory paragraph be read. I won't ask for a presentation regarding these unless you have a particular question, then we'll ask the person most knowledgeable to step up and answer those. So if we can begin with Article 13?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $54,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash for the installation of electrical sub panels at Whately Elementary School.
Second.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions about Article 13? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article 13 passes by the majority vote required. At this point, I'm obliged to warn you about carpal tunnel syndrome. Please, for the next article, raise your other hand with your card.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to pay for purchase and installation of flooring in pre-K restrooms at the Whately Elementary School.
Second.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, clarifications, concerns? We've all had children that age, haven't we? Okay. And therefore, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. Excellent. All those opposed, all right, and Article 14 passes by majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $13,500 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to pay for the purchase and installation of exterior doors at the Whately Elementary School.
Second.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about Article 15? Yes, please.
Hi, this is Beth Luegen from Inchikowski Circle. I wondered why?
Is there someone who'd like to step forward to address the question of the need for new doors, please? I'm inviting Darius Modesto, our superintendent, to speak to this, please.
Yeah, good evening. So on the backside of the building, there are three classroom doors that exit to the outside where the, they started to rust away to the point where critters can actually get in, so replacing the whole framing in the door.
Okay, that's good. I was just wondering if it was for like security reasons, considering the climate these days?
All right, any additional questions or concerns? Then let's move to a vote, please, on Article 15. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, Article 15 passes by the majority vote required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $66,000 by transferring the sum of $30,000 from the Vehicle Stabilization Account and $36,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash, totaling $66,000 to purchase a hybrid pickup truck for the Highway Department.
Second.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let's move to, and discussion, move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, a card. All those opposed, Article 16 is passed by the majority vote required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $6,500 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to pay for resealing the exterior brick at the library.
Second.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Is there a question? Mr. Skroski, please.
Don Skroski, Christian Lane. I'm just curious why we aren't taking this out of CPA funds. We did the church windows, which basically is a private organization, and the silos out of CPA, yet we're taking this out of free cash. Why?
Historic preservation. The others were historic preservation, this isn't.
Okay, this doesn't call, the answer that I heard is that it doesn't qualify as historic preservation.
Our library isn't historical?
It's also regular maintenance.
Pardon me?
It's regular maintenance, it's not restoration.
Well, maintenance to replace windows is maintenance too.
All right, it's, thank you for the question, but we don't have an ongoing direct discussion of items between each person here. The questions should be directed to the moderator, and I'll make, try to make sure that the question is answered. An answer has been proposed. If I would hear you correctly, you have an answer but are unhappy with it. Okay, are there any other questions or concerns regarding Article 17? If not, we'd like to move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, the motion carries by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from available funds fiscal year '23 free cash to purchase and equip a hybrid cruiser for the Police Department.
Second.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions regarding Article 18? Is that a hand in the back? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
How many cruisers do we have currently?
Would someone from the Police Department be able to answer that question, please?
Chief is back here.
Keith? Jim? Anyway, someone.
Good evening, Jim Savini, Chief of Police. So we currently have, if you drive by the station, you'll see four police cruisers. One of those is a detail. One of those is a detail car, the sedan. That's a detail car. That doesn't get used for anything other than details, and when that gets used, we charge the vendor for the use of that car. So that leaves three other cars. One of those cars was the 2018 that was replaced by the new hybrid cruiser. So technically, we're left with two cars right now. So this article would be to add a third car.
Are there any additional?
We're adding a third car. Yes.
And how many officers are on duty at one time? We need three cars?
Yes. Currently, three days a week, we have at least two officers. We also have a clinician that drives along with us one to two days a week. So that sometimes is the third person that's out there in a third car. So quite frequently, we do use three cars during a shift.
All right, thank you very much for that clarification. Any additional questions regarding the purchase of this vehicle?
Fred Olsowski, 154 Christian Lane. This article talks about purchasing a hybrid vehicle for a police department. Article 16 is a hybrid vehicle for the highway department, and Article 11 talks about a vehicle stabilization fund. I thought that at one point, the vehicle stabilization fund was to cut, was to include all vehicles that the town departments had. Could somebody explain the difference between the stabilization fund and Article 11 and these other two articles that are asking for more money in addition to what's already in a vehicle stabilization fund?
Is there someone on the slide board or the finance committee?
Is this live? Okay. Believe me, we went through this round and around, okay? But the bottom line is that we are members of a state green communities, and they have certain guidelines as to vehicles that we purchase. Regarding the stabilization fund, we put monies away every year for purchase. It started a number of years ago specifically to replace police cruisers. And we are using those monies in different spots to alleviate the pressure on the budget from the purchase of multiple vehicles. That, that particular, that particular portion of the budget is not there to purchase all vehicles in the town. So we have to go to the regular budget to make, to make it available to purchase those vehicles, whether it's on the police or highway. So that's what that piece of the budget, that's what that line item is for. Does that answer your question? Oh, I'm sorry, that's you.
Yes, but could you explain what's the, so what vehicles are being purchased with the vehicle stabilization account, and what is the balance in that account today?
The, these are great questions. I will allow that to proceed, but let me remind you, we've already voted on the vehicle stabilization fund.
But we've got two other vehicles we're purchasing, or we're proposing to purchase. I'd like to know what's the relationship of them two to the vehicle stabilization fund?
I guess the question is like, did that fund contribute in any way towards the purchase of those vehicles?
It doesn't cover the, it doesn't cover the cost of those particular vehicles. It, it helped purchase the police cruiser and the pickup for the highway department. And that's about it. In fact, I believe the highway, I believe the police cruiser is being funded entirely in the budget. Is that true, Tom? Free cash, right, right.
Lynn, did you have anything you wanted to, or Tricia?
So the stabilization funds are sort of like savings accounts. You, we appropriate money into them for big ticket items, and for this one, it's specifically for vehicles. The amount in the vehicle stabilization fund could not fund all the vehicles that we're purchasing this year. You will see that we're funding 30,000 from the vehicle stabilization fund to subsidize half the purchase of the hybrid truck in the highway department. The cruiser is being paid for from free cash because if we use the vehicle stabilization fund, it would reduce the balance to less than 20,000. After we move the 30,000 out from the vehicle stabilization fund, it will still have 53,000 in it. You'll see that we also transferred 20,000 more into the stabilization fund. So to answer Mr. Olsowski's question, we're funding some money for the vehicle stabilization fund, as is its purpose, to help purchase half the cost of the highway pickup, pickup truck, but it could not fund the cost of the police hybrid cruiser, so we're paying for that with free cash.
So the proposal here now, sir, as to whether we would, as the town, would like to authorize that purchase from those funds for this item.
Let me just say, I appreciate your, your description of what funds are being used for which vehicles. I appreciate that because it is not clear in the write-up. Now, I don't know if the extra notes to this talks about how much money has been used from stabilization.
Yes.
Appreciate the, the additional information. Thank you.
So the question before us now is whether we would like to allocate 65,000 from free cash for a hybrid cruiser. Are there any other new questions, clarifications? Seeing none, I'd like to proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? The motion carries by the majority required. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budget and vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $199,400 in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, including debt service for any approved community preservation project, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows, and you see the list in your warrant.
Second.
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions regarding the items in Article 19? Seeing none, I'd like to proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Article 19 passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve Fund for the rehabilitation of the town-owned barn at 215 Chestnut Plain Road, with the work to be done according to the Secretary of the Interior's standards for preservation.
Second.
All right, Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions regarding allocation of funds for the town-owned barn? I didn't know we owned a barn, but okay. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? All right, the motion carries by, Article 20 carries by the majority vote required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the, that the town vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $16,525 from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation Reserves for batting cages at Hurley Field.
Second.
All right, Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Would anyone like to step up to the plate? Ooh, foul humor. Okay.
That's a baseless joke.
All right. Okay, with that pitch in favor of Article 21, all those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed? Article 21 has passed by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town return the sum of $1,011.50 to the Community Preservation Fund balance, being the amount of funds remaining from an appropriation of $6,500 under Article 1 of the November 6, 2021 special town meeting, for expansion of the existing ice rink, installation of a smaller rink, and for lighting of both rinks.
Second.
Are there questions about Article 22? Really? Okay.
We're getting money back.
Yeah, the money was put on ice, now it's returning. Okay. Ooh, okay. A tough crowd here tonight. All those in favor of Article 22, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 22 has passed by the majority vote required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to return the sum of $1,630.33 to the Community Preservation Fund balance, being the amount of funds remaining from an appropriation of $13,530 under Article 2 of the March 23, 2022 special town meeting, for improvements to the town-owned cemeteries, including but not limited to the installation of fences and benches.
Second.
Article 23 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 23, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 23 passes by the majority vote required. A quick check in here, it's now 7 o'clock, sunset is in an hour and a half. At this point here, we have several zoning bylaw amendments. I'm going to ask Branch Chekis of the Planning Board to step up and introduce these, put forward the motion, read the introductory paragraph, but not the detailed material beyond that, although there is in fact even more detailed material in a supplement that Brant will also call your attention to. Brant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. My name is Branch Chikis, and I've been serving as the Chair of the Planning Board since last October. I do want to take a quick moment to just acknowledge the great work of my colleagues on the Planning Board. I want to acknowledge Don Sluter, who was Chair of the Planning Board for many years before he left Whately. How could you even think about leaving Whately? But he left Whately, and I became the Chair in his stead. Sarah Cooper in the audience, Judy Markland, Newby, JD Ross, and, and Judy, I said Judy Markland, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. She, she's like two people on the Planning Board. Anyway, thank you all, I've learned so much from all of them, and I'm really excited about the, the bylaw amendments and proposals we have for you tonight. I wanna, I'm going to be very brief because in moving these articles, I, well, in fact, let me just move the first article, and then we'll go from there. Okay. All right. So, I move Article 24, that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw by deleting in its entirety Article 8 Growth Control and allow the town clerk to renumber sections and subsections accordingly as printed in the warrant for this meeting and more fully described in the report to the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet, provided as a handout to all voters at this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, very good. All right. So because, I don't know about you, I have sweat, I have sweat in places where sweat doesn't belong. While I prepared a long and short version of a brief explanation of all of these six proposals from the Planning Board, I'm going to give you the very shortest version and then allow questions. I really do want to draw your attention to the four-page Planning Board report in the town booklet. I'm very proud of that. We worked very hard to try to put the intent and the effect of these six proposals in very plain English, very short, easy to read. So I'm going to try to avoid repeating myself or repeating what's already there for you to read or insulting your intelligence, and just speak very briefly and then take your questions. So for the current article that we've just moved and that's been seconded, here's the short summary of it. This warrant article asks you to approve the deletion of a section of the town zoning bylaws, which the State Supreme Court has found to be unconstitutional and unenforceable. Full stop. The long, in the warrant article itself, you can see the text, roughly two and a half pages, that is to be deleted.
All right. Will you now take up discussion questions regarding this first article? Article number 24. Yes, please, step up to the microphone, Brant.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Jeff DeRose, AD Westbrook. I'm curious, I, I understand that it's been declared by the state court to be unenforceable and unconstitutional. Once the Planning Board was met with that decision, was there any plan to replace those restrictions in some other form that was their intention?
Thank you for that question. It sent a shiver up my spine, which is very appropriate tonight. The answer is no. We believe, based on all the available evidence, that the original intent of growth, basically the growth control bylaw was to try to, and bylaws of that type by other municipalities in Massachusetts, were intended to give towns some breathing room. When there's been some spurt in development, they want to do some capacity planning, it was really supposed to be for a very short period of time. We've looked at the available data, and we don't see these kinds of issues affecting Whately. There's adequate school resources, there's adequate water resources. We don't feel that there's a defensible, we can defend any new changes to this bylaw or new bylaws that would try to constrict development. Basically, the purpose of the development, of the bylaws themselves is to set the rules for where, where and what kind of development can take place in town, and that's how we achieve our desired effect. Is that hopeful?
It is.
Yes, I mean, we've, of course, we're well below, historically, we've been well below the kinds of limits that were placed in the growth control bylaw. And we've just come to see the growth control bylaws like that, you know, that box of junk you have in your attic or your garage? It's like, you could just leave it there, but now that we see that it's unenforceable, we just want to get it out of there, clean up the bylaws. It's essentially housekeeping.
I have one follow-up question, and that is, is there going to continue to be any effort to limit the amount of building permits issued every year?
No, not as done through zoning bylaws. That's not anything that the Planning Board currently envisages. And we don't see that that's been an issue for Whately.
Let's move to a vote on this.
Okay.
If there are no other questions or concerns regarding this article, I'd like to move it to a vote. Article 24, please, all in favor, raise your card. All those opposed? Article 24 passes by the percentage required, which I would note is both a majority and two-thirds and nearly unanimous. Thank you.
Juggling all this paper now. There we are. Okay. Okay. Article 25. So I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 174-28.4, Aquifer Protection District, by deleting the reference to the Whately Water District as printed in the warrant for this meeting, and more fully described in the report of the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet that you all have.
Second.
Okay. Article 25 is up for vote, and up for discussion. Are there any questions?
I'll do my little.
Yeah, sure.
Really, seem a little more enthusiastic about that. Why don't you? Okay, very good. Okay, so, this article, together with the following article, asks town residents, you, to finish a job we started last year. At that time, we removed text references in the zoning bylaws to a water supply system in the center of town that is no longer in use and will not be used again in the future. We did not change the zoning map at that time because we lacked the necessary data. These articles tonight remove the protection districts for the Whately Center District from the map and from the bylaw text. You'll notice in the booklet, in the maps, and I'll speak about the maps in the next article, you'll notice that taking out the water district protection areas exposes a portion of the water department, the remaining water supplies protection district that was actually underneath.
Are there questions regarding Article 25, which requires a two-thirds vote for Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, and it is passed by the two-thirds vote required. Brant?
Okay. Very good. Let's talk maps.
Article 26.
Yes, Article 26. So I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw and zoning map, established under Section 171-4, by adopting a new zoning map titled Town of Whately Official Zoning Map, June 18, 2024, today's date, which excludes from Aquifer Protection District, Zone 2 and Zone 3, those areas that were so designated for the now abandoned Whately Water District Public Water Supply, and to likewise amend the map titled Whately Zoning Map, Aquifer Protection District Areas, dated April 24, 2007, as amended by town meeting, and reference in Section 171-28.4D, Aquifer Protection District Area Boundaries, as more fully described in the report of the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet, provided as a handout to all voters. Thank you.
This article is now up for questions or discussion. Do you have anything further you want to add? Please go ahead.
I'll just refer you all in the Planning Board report to two maps. By my, I have, there's a map on Page 7 and another map on Page 8 of the town booklet. This is the portion that is the Planning Board report in the town booklet. So on Page 7 of the town booklet, there is a map labeled Figure 1. This is the new map that we are asking, we are asking you to vote to approve. This map has everything you loved about last year's map, when we also voted to approve a map. However, what we have done in this map is shrink the boundaries of the Aquifer Protection District in a way that eliminates protections for the now abandoned Town Center Public Water Supply. The map you can see on Page 7, were these reproduced in color? Yes. Awesome. The color helps. I have a black and white version. Figure 2 is not a map you're voting on, it's just to help you all understand what we're doing here. What this second map is intended to illustrate is the changes from the, from last year's map to this year's map that we're asking you to approve. It shows, say, in the upper-left corner of the zones that are Aquifer Protection Zones, that a Zone 3 for the Water District is being removed. It shows you that a Zone 3 for the Water Department is being enlarged, and there's, you can sort of see the overlap between the Zone 2 that used to protect the Water District, and there is an area of needed to protect the Water District Supply, the old, now abandoned supply, but it also contributes to protecting the remaining department water supply. All right? So it's a, that should help you understand how we're taking last year's map and just removing some land that was previously restricted by virtue of being in the protection zone for the now abandoned Water District. Thank you.
Thank you, Brant, for that clarification. Questions, please. I recognize one. Fran?
Fran Fortino. I like the redrawing of the maps, but I'm wondering if there any consideration's been given to having these former Water District Protected Areas remain protected as a backup source potentially for our Water Department?
So we have developed this, this change in collaboration and consultation with the Water Department. We've been assured that, two things, that removing or abandoning the Water District as a public water supply removes any legal authority on the part of the town to protect districts that no law, protect areas that relate to it. So we have lost the legal authority to maintain protections over an abandoned water supply, which is what the district is. That's part one. Part two, we've been talking to the Water Department, we've been assured that, for various reasons, and I know, say, Nicholas Jones could elaborate on this if anyone wanted, but we've been assured that there is no foreseeable future in which the Water District Water Supply would be called back into use and used as a backup. So we found there was simply no basis for trying to retain protections, no legal authority, no future use of that water supply.
Thank you, Fran. Answer your questions. Okay. Anything further? Yes, please.
Hi, Jenny Morrison, 186 Chestnut Plain Road. Can we clarify what it means to be protected if we're going to stop doing it?
Well, you really don't want me to read that length, the lengthy section of the zoning bylaws that I have with me tonight. There are state rules about what can and cannot be done on land that falls within these Aquifer Protection Districts. And we have pages in our zoning bylaws that lay out prohibitions and so forth. I'd be happy, I mean, I could sample this now, do you, why don't you, it's extensive, and there are also rules about how lot sizes for development must be larger. There are a number of restrictions on landowners whose lots fall within the Aquifer Protection District.
Okay, so to clarify, though, you said, once we're stopped, stopping using these districts, we no longer can protect them, which is separate from the question of whether we have a desire to.
That is literally the case.
Additional questions? So is it fair to summarize that what this does is update our water protection area to protect the area from which we gather water?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. In that case, let's move to a vote, please. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, the article has passed, Article 26 has passed by the two-thirds vote Continuing on from his previous engagement here, I once again welcome Brant Chekis up to the podium.
I'm really not sweating because I'm nervous about this. Okay, we are, we're moving on. Oh, this is yours.
Yes.
All right, very good. All right.
This is Community Housing, 27 and 28.
Oh, here's my script. I have, we have scripts up here. Awesome. Article 27. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-23, Congregate Elderly Housing, by adding a new section, Community Housing, numbered as 171-23.1, as more fully described in the report of the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet, provided as a handout to all voters at this meeting, and further, that the town clerk shall be authorized to assign to the bylaw the appropriate numbering after Section 171-23.
Second.
Second.
Articles 27 is up for discussion.
Okay. So I'll do my, I'll do my spiel. Okay, very good. Do my very short version of this. Okay. On the zoning map. Here we are. Thank you. This bylaw transfers the approval process for residential projects which contain a minimum of 25% affordable units to the town, from that now held by the state. So it transfers approval. Under current state law, any such project would be exempt from most zoning requirements, and the town would have little or no control over the siting, projects that have this minimum, meet this minimum 25% affordable units. This bylaw waives some local zoning requirements for these projects, however, it requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals and all the public transparency and oversight that entails, and it also requires a site review by the Planning Board, also providing public transparency and oversight. Together, these two approval processes would be less arduous overall than a state-level review process. We believe it should expand opportunities for development of more affordable homes for Whately workers. Just as a matter of us aside, I don't know if people kind of think about what it means, what's considered affordable by the definition that we're using in this bylaw, but as one example, and there's a table that we could discuss in the Planning Board handout, but for example, for a family of four, a family of four household that earns up to $87,000 a year would be considered affordable by this definition. Okay? So the bylaw just changes the way that certain residential housing projects are reviewed and approved. It does not create or confer any new rights that are not already available under current state law. That's it. Full stop. Thank you.
All right. So now, any further questions regarding Article 27? Yes, please. Montserrat?
Montserrat, Arch Paul, 147 Westbrook Road. I just want to add that this is also recommended by the Housing Committee.
Thank you for that addition. Any other comments, questions? Brant, are you, okay. Then let's please move to a vote for Article 27. I will note that I'm going to ask the town clerk to record if it passes by two-thirds as well as by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, and it is passed by two-thirds, and then also therefore by majority. And now we come to the second part, Article 28.
Yes. So Article 27 and 28 work together, Article 27 being the bylaw language itself. Article 28, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-8, Table of Use Regulations, to add community housing as a new use, and to specify how the new use will be permitted as printed in the warrant and more fully described in the report of the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet provided to all voters at this meeting. Thank you.
Second.
All right, Article 28 has been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of Article 28, please raise your card. All the way up? There you go, good, thank you. Okay, those opposed, we're getting tired. But nonetheless, Article 28 has passed by the required two-thirds majority. And Brant, for your final act, please. Article 29.
Very good. Okay. So, Article 29. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-10, Table of Dimensional Requirements, by inserting two footnotes as printed in the warrant and more fully described in the report of the Planning Board in the annual town meeting booklet, provided to all voters at this meeting. Get so much mileage out of it.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Article 28, 9 has been moved and seconded. Do you have anything else you want to add at this point? Anything, questions, comments?
I need a better explanation. Yes, are you, are you, would you like to make that, would you like to meet us?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, please.
Explain this a little better. How is this going to affect a landowner such as myself? How's that? I know what I got now, and now you want to change it?
No. Let me just see where I have the, thank you. I've got so many, because the Table of Dimensional Requirements is, oh yeah. It's hot, and I've been.
Where is that?
Yeah, do you, the, you have it in the warrant.
Our warrant doesn't have it.
Doesn't show the table of, doesn't show the amended.
No, that's.
Table of, well, this is what you've got, right? So it's for, we're looking at Article 29.
It's not in the script, but it's in the.
Oh, it's not, oh, God, yeah. That's why I'm confused, because I was given a script that doesn't have this Table of Dimensional Requirements. You have it. Okay. All right. I'm going to explain it anyway, because you've teed me up for this. All right. Table of Dimensional Requirements is a pretty key part of our zoning bylaws. It specifies various minimums, minimum lot size, minimum frontage, setbacks, you know, side, front, et cetera setbacks. And, and it does this for our five zoning districts, AR1 Agricultural, Residential 1, AR2, Commercial, Commercial, Industrial, and Industrial. And it makes some distinctions within those zones between lots that are served by public water and lots that are not served by public water. There are two new footnotes that are being added to this Table of Dimensional Requirements, and you can see them in your warrant. There's the two asterisks, that's one of the footnotes that we're adding in this motion. And then there's the three asterisk footnote. This, these footnotes address a latent sort of issue that's been hanging around, unknown in our zoning bylaws for a while, for lots that are divided into an AR1 portion that has frontage on the road, and then has an AR2 portion set more than 400 feet back. has frontage on the road, and then has an AR2 portion set more than 400 feet back. When the, there's, there has been confusion that's affected potential new residential developments in town about what happens if a dwelling is to be placed in the AR2 portion of the lot, more than 400 feet back from the right-of-way. What, which, what lot area, what's the right, what's the minimum lot area in that case? What is the frontage? If the dwelling is in AR2, but the lot fronts in AR1, does it have to have AR2 frontage or AR1? So it was confusing, and the building inspector had questions, so we sought to clarify this. So the impact, what we are clarifying, and the Planning Board is doing this because we, as a board, believe that when the bylaw years ago was put into, when the new bylaw that created AR2 was added to our zoning bylaws years ago, this, the intent of these new footnotes was the board's intent at that time, but was not made clear at that time. So the board felt that if you have a lot, you want to say, build a, you have a lot that you want to build a new dwelling on, and you want to put that, you want to put your dwelling 500 feet back into the AR2 portion of your lot. With me so far? Maybe you didn't know that there was an AR1 or an AR2. But anyway, you wanted to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
So this footnote says that first, if your lot has frontage in AR1, then the AR1 frontage rules apply. So you're, by putting your dwelling in AR2, normally all the AR2 rules would apply, but that was not the Planning Board's intent. You would have to have AR2 level frontage, all right? So he said, you put your dwelling back there, the frontage is just the AR1 frontage, because your lot fronts in AR1, so that's fine. However, and, all the area in your lot counts towards the total minimum lot area. There was confusion, is only the portion of the lot that's in AR2 counted towards the AR2 minimum lot requirement? That wasn't entirely clear. And, yeah. Now it's much clearer.
Sure.
With, at least between us and the building inspector, which is who really matters in all of this. And this, this is something that will definitely make a difference for current and future residential builder, people who want to build their houses or subdivide their lots and have, build new homes for their kids. Does that help?
No.
All right, that was a lot. Further questions? Discussion, yes, please. Neil.
So Neil Abram, 184 Chestnut Plain Road. My question relates to Chestnut Plain Road. The town right-of-way is extremely wide. In fact, most of the front yards of the houses on Chestnut Plain Road are town property. So do you know, are all of those houses at least set back 50 feet from the boundary of the private property line along the sides? Or would, if a house burned down, would you be able to rebuild on that site if it wasn't 50 feet away, or you grandfathered with whatever is the current distance of the front of the house from the, the boundary? As I say, two-thirds or three-quarters of the front yards of our houses belong to the town, and I assume this is not measured from the road, it's measured from the boundary of the private property.
Was this related to the question? Well, so there is a lot there. But maybe let me address what I think is the concern here, because I think I also heard you say, "We're changing the rules," which I disagree with, actually, because these footnotes, in our view, don't change the rules. They don't make anything that is currently conforming to zoning bylaws non-conforming. So nobody, as a result of approving these changes, would suddenly now not have a lot that's kosher by our zoning bylaws. So we're not, we're not putting anybody in jeopardy. We're clarifying the fact that if, if, what the rules apply from our dimensional requirements based on where you place the use within a lot, relative to the AR1, AR2 boundary, I don't know that I'm prepared tonight to address the specifics of your question. I can say that AR1 is defined as extending 400 feet back from the right-of-way on any road that provides lot frontage. So you determine where that right-of-way line is. AR1 is the portion of the lot that goes back up to 400 feet, and the portion of the lot that is beyond that line is in the AR2 portion of that lot. And there are some lots that are, you can imagine a rectangular lot that fronts on a townway, has a portion that's within AR1, and another portion in AR2. We're just clarifying what the rules, and this really applies when new development is being contemplated.
All right, if there are no more new questions, I'd like to proceed to a vote. We have Article 29, which requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 29 passes by the two-thirds vote required. Thank you, Brant, for a very extensive presentation. Okay. Okay, so a few notes and ground rules for what's coming up. You have passed the authorization the Select Board needs to function. You've passed our budget. You've passed our bylaws. And now we're coming up to resolutions which instruct or petition other bodies to take action. The first of these petitions, the post office to take a particular action. The second instructs our town to contact various elected representatives. And the third one asks our town to ask the state legislature to pass a law to allow a change in voting rules. Now, somebody asked me if I thought there'd be a heated discussion about any of these here, and I said, "It's 90 degrees, the whole meeting is a heating discussion." But I think that there's no need to have a heated discussion as opposed to a full and forthright discussion. And there's certain requirements that are needed for that to take place, which I'm expecting all of you to embrace. The first is that since we have 50 minutes till sundown, or rather, 55, I'm proposing to allocate 15 minutes for each of these items. That does not mean you have to discuss it for 15 minutes. You are always open to make a motion that's informally called "Call the Question." However, that must take place after we've heard from the viewpoints for and against, and you may not call the question simply by shouting it, I must acknowledge it. And you must say, "Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question, I acknowledge that." And you may not do it particularly at the end of a statement, either for or against any of the items that are up there, trying to end discussion with the last word. The other thing to recognize is that we are debating not each other, but we are debating articles that have been put forward, and so therefore, arguments for and against are put forward to the moderator, and the moderator recognizes people in order to make sure that all viewpoints have been heard that are necessary for us to come to a decision about how we would like to vote on this matter here. And so I will not be allowing one-to-one discussions among members of, between members of the audience here, and I will be trying to make sure that everybody has had a chance to be heard. I will ask the petitioners to be the first speaker, and if there is a clarifying question the petitioner needs to answer, I will ask them to do that. I will not be looking to have the petitioners respond to each point that is made, but at the very, at the end, I will also allow the petitioner to try and respond to something that feel they have not been addressed. So if you're a petitioner, please have a notepad and write down things you think need to be addressed when you have another chance. I would like to jump in with that there, noting now that the first one of these is starting at 19:40, at 7:40, and so that we would go until 7:55, at which point I will ask proceed sooner. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about what I'm proposing that we do? Thank you. In that case, then I'd invite, I've lost my document here, but I believe the first of these, I need to invite Amy Levy, Amy to step up, and as part of this, we need to have Amy temporarily cede her authority as town clerk, and to cede that position to the Assistant Town Clerk by a vote in meeting to speak to this article. So, prior to Article 30, I would like all those in favor of temporary transfer of authority to the Assistant Town Clerk, in favor, I'd like to raise your card. All those opposed? Thank you for allowing Amy therefore to be able to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Amy Lavalley, I'm your town clerk. I'm also extremely nervous, so I'm not dumb, I'm just nervous, and I have a lot of anxiety right now, I'm sorry. I bring to you a petition to petition the USPS to have, Waitley have one zip code 01093. Everybody, you should have gotten a handout when you came in. That explains all the reasons why. I know it's really hot, and I don't know if you want me to go through every single one. I'm not as good of a speaker as Brant is, but I'll do my best. I also have JP Kennedy here, who's going to speak of the emergency services aspect of why we're looking for this zip code change. This is something that previous town clerks have been doing, trying to do for almost 25 years. Previous town clerks and I feel that this is a need in our town. There are so many aspects that this affects. It affects residents and their mail, and trying to get real ID at the Registry of Motor Vehicles. I have probably two to three times a week, somebody coming into the office or calling because they need help, because they're in 0103, 01373, and they need 01093, and they have trouble with their mail, and they have trouble with their packages. That's just one aspect. I think the biggest thing you, as residents, that's your biggest headache, right? But there's so much more to it. Emergency services, which JP is going to speak about, I don't want to talk too much about it, but we had an incident recently, and the callers were saying they were on Route 5 in South Deerfield. They weren't. It delayed services to them, and that's a huge problem. From my point of view, and from in the office's point of view, excise taxes, a lot of people put their addresses as 01373, or 013, 01039, or 01066, and so that town is getting our excise tax revenue if we don't catch it. Another aspect is registering to vote. A lot of people end up going into South Deerfield's voter system instead of Waitley's voter system, and the town clerk and I in South Deerfield have become very good friends, going back and forth, trying to fix these errors. I probably spend about two hours a week in our state's registration system fixing these errors. Those are just some of the things that are in the handout. I don't want to talk too long, because I know it's hot, and I know that everybody's, the bugs are coming out and everything else. JP, did you want to come talk?
Oh, no. Yes. Please do step away. We have to formally invite JP to speak on this.
I formally invite JP Kennedy, who's our fire chief, to just speak on the emergency management aspect of this.
I think Amy did a great job of outlining a lot of the reasons why the multiple zip codes are an issue here in town, as outlined in her packet. I'm here to speak to the most important concern from my standpoint, which is a public safety point of view, that all too often, 911 calls are placed by people who wrongly report the address of the emergency. So, quick show of hands, how many people here have actually called 911 before? I know there's a bunch of people here. One of the first things that the dispatcher's going to ask when you call 911 is, what is the address of the location? And they want to know so they can start sending resources right away if the phone is disconnected. Very often, people report their address in town here as South Deerfield. It's also conceivable that they can report their address as North Hatfield or Williamsburg, if that's the address that they've been using. It may seem like this doesn't happen very often, but I can attest to the fact that it happens more often than people realize. I've got a letter here from Shelburne Control, from the dispatch supervisor, and he agrees that, I can quote you one line from here, "I can confirm from you that state police Shelburne Falls Regional Communication Center frequently receives calls requesting emergency services from residents who are in Waitley who believe they reside in South Deerfield." It happens, and it happens more frequently than we realize. In fact, I can tell you that when we had the fire at the Rainbow Motel, one of the first 911 calls, an occupant who resided there, wasn't a temporary resident but who resided there, said the emergency was in South Deerfield. I can tell you that there's been medical emergencies in town that have been reported as River Road in South Deerfield, when they were actually in Waitley, and the ambulance went the wrong direction and had to be redirected. Just as recently as yesterday, I received a call from a fire alarm company asking to verify an address in town, and it turns out that this resident had a South Deerfield address listed for their fire alarm for several years, and it wasn't caught until yesterday. This happens, and it happens fairly frequently. There's times where it's not really a very big deal, and there's times where minutes and even seconds can make a huge difference in property loss and conservation or somebody's life. And I'm just going to run a quick note here that, you know, we're familiar with our E911 system, enhanced 911. It's come a long ways. When we call from a landline, that phone is registered to that address, and it comes up on the screen as a registered address. Things get more complicated when we start calling from cellphones. That address can be acquired by GPS utilizing their E911 system. But a lot of our homes now, we use voice-over internet, so we're using a phone through our cable. And unless you've actually gone through the effort, which most people don't, of registering their residence as opposed to the mailing address, when you call 911 from a voice-over internet phone, it's going to come up as whatever address that bill goes to. So it's just something to, a little bit of food for thought for people. And if anybody has any questions, more questions, I'd be happy to try and field them as best I can. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you very much. We're now open for general questions and discussion. Please line up at the microphones there and be able to identify your name and address, please.
Harland Bean, 80 Weber Road. Couple of things. I understand the issue with EMS and all that, but if you don't know your address, that's not a zip code problem. I don't know, if somebody thinks they live in South Deerfield and they live in Waitley, you can change all the zip codes, that's not going to fix that issue, number one. Number two, and your shipping, I understand it's confusing having a town with multiple zip codes, but on most of your shipping with, whether it's Amazon, UPS, you have your billing address, and then it says the shipping address. If there's a difference, there's a difference. And thirdly, what does this do to the, those of us that get mail delivery service? We have a mailbox, and we're west Waitley, which is technically Haydenville-Williamsburg, 01039. Mail lady, mail guy comes every day, delivers our mail, picks up our mail, I have a ton of mail. What happens to swapping to one zip code? What happens to swapping to one zip code? Is Whately going to get a little bus and start bringing the mail around, everybody?
So there's a clarifying question regarding delivery of the mail? Is there anyone who can speak to that?
No, I, I'm.
Okay, please go ahead.
I will speak against.
Thank you for your question. So the USPS has told us that they, we will still continue to get our mail service through South Deerfield. It's just a matter of changing the sorting label. So you would still keep your same mail person, and they would still keep the same route, it wouldn't be any different. The people who have Whately post office boxes, that will not be an issue either. One thing I do want to speak to, and I understand that you said, you know, you put one address and as your street, or one as your mailbox, that works except for the people who live on River Road in Whately versus River Road in South Deerfield. I have multiple times been called by residents in South Deerfield because they keep getting packages that were supposed to be in Whately, and everybody has become friends because they keep trading mail and packages. One resident in particular has, shares an address with a rather large company in Whately, and they are constantly getting deliveries to her house with big trucks, and that's not the right place. So that's just what I wanted to speak to. But the USPS has told us that they can do this, it's just a matter of changing the barcode.
So, can I just add on that? I don't understand how the USPS, so if somebody mails me a letter from, you know, Dallas, Texas, and now they put on it, Whately, Mass. 01093, how is the USPS going to know that that goes to Haydenville and not to Whately?
That question is beyond our purview, how the USPS figures out how to deliver packages and mail. Thank you.
I just don't see.
Yeah, right, right. We are petitioning them to continue to deliver our mail, in some cases using a different zip code, and the, and the subject of the article is, would we like everyone in Whately to have the same zip code for that, as part of that? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak to this? I would like to speak.
If necessary, sure.
No. I, I'm speaking as an individual, as a resident, not as a member of the Select Board, the Select Board has taken no action on this. But I would like to speak against this proposal, and not because I dispute anything that the clerk or the chief has said. Everything they've said is 100% true. My concern is the Whately post office, and what, for lack of a better term, I will call poking the bear. The USPS is not a rational organization, except in that they like to save money, and they have taken in the last many years, closing small-town post offices. And I think the most important consideration for us, granting the inconvenience, granting the confusion, but my concern is keeping the Whately post office open. And I do not want to be in the position of asking any favors of the USPS, which might result in they're saying, sure, we'll do this for you, but we're going to close your post office. You can have the zip code, just not the post office. And I think that having the post office is the most important thing in this, in any postal considerations. As I said, I do not dispute anything that's been said about the inconvenience. I live on a street that has a corresponding street in South Deerfield, so particularly GPS, I've had many people end up near the Deerfield Elementary School when trying to find my house. I've had packages that have gotten rerouted because of that. It is inconvenient, it is not pleasant, but I think it is weighing all the factors, it is less important to the entire town, keeping the post office building open, and I don't want to take the risk of having someone in Boston, or Springfield, or Hartford, or Washington looking down at a piece of paper and saying, well, why do we even need this post office at all? Let's just take them off the list and close it. And I don't even want to take the risk of that happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I need to apologize to Fred, I thought he was trying to respond to a previous discussion rather than raising a new point. We have one minute left in this discussion period. If you want to extend it at that point, it'll require a two-thirds vote. Neil, are you ready to ask a question?
I'm ready to make a statement.
Okay.
Neil Abram, 184 Chestnut Plain Road. I'm also president of the Whately Historical Society, which owns the post office in the center of town. My understanding, which differs a little bit from what has been reported to us, is that the whole purpose of having zip codes was to expedite the delivery of mail. And each post office, which sorts and distributes mail by whatever its method is, receives what is on its zip code. So I fully endorse all of the efforts to address the concerns that the clerks and the chief have addressed for public safety and for other reasons. I will vote against this because I'm not sure that the request to have a unified zip code is the way to solve the problem, and it runs the risks such as what Fred Baron has identified. So I am, I am concerned that the post office will revert to its original intent for zip codes, which was all about mail delivery. It was not about excise taxes, it was not about public service for emergencies, it was about mail delivery and where the mail should go. And if we're demanding that mail be read by handwriting, artificial intelligence machines to identify if the street address is in fact going to a different post office than the Whately Center post office, maybe they can tell us that they can make that work. I would vote to explore solutions. I'm not sure this is the only solution, but I am deeply concerned that we run into a brick wall of the original intent of the post office establishing, establishing the zip codes in the first place.
Thank you, Neil. We're at time here. Unless there is a motion, unless someone wants to step forward to make a motion to extend discussion on this item, and by a certain amount, we'll proceed to a vote. Do you want to make a motion to extend discussion?
Yes.
By how much?
Five minutes.
By five minutes, all right. We need to proceed to a vote on that, it would require two-thirds passage. All those in favor of extending by additional five minutes, raise your card. All those opposed, I'm saying that it has passed by a two-thirds majority, so we'll give it an extra five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jim Selman, and I'm a new resident. We've been here a couple of years, and I live on 14 Swamp Road. I'd like to thank Amy and the, and the clerks and the people in the office who put this out. It does put a lot of information in a very concise and brief document. I think making a definitive issue of this right now is not the right thing to do. I would endorse what Neil said in terms of getting maybe a task force, or getting, getting into this thing just a little bit further and find out how much of this is going to be politics, how much we really have to fear. But the bottom line is that Whately is the one and only Whately, and I think there's something nice about the way that sounds. And I'd like to think that Whately could be unified under one zip code. But notwithstanding all the problems that we have in front of us, I think it just needs to really be explored, and then we can come back to the town.
Thank you. Is there anyone who's not yet spoken who would like to? Joyce, please, and then, and.
Then Larry.
Then Larry, okay.
Hi, I'm Joyce Palmer-Forten. I'm speaking as an individual, not necessarily as a member of the Select Board, although I really take to heart everything that Amy said. We spend, and our employees spend, a lot of time sorting this out. That is the equivalent of Amy not being able to do other things that would benefit our town. I do not agree with the people who think that the post office is going to close our little post office because of this zip code. It's completely unrelated. They could close that post office and not have the same zip code. It's, it's, they're two issues, and I think they get conflated, and that's, that's wrong. The reason this has come up is that the post office has improved its mail sorting systems, they've got better computers, it's no longer a TRS-80 running the whole system like it used to be. They can do this now. So they came to us and said, would you like to eliminate some of this confusion? And it's confusing for them too, honestly. Would you like to eliminate this confusion? We have the technology now to do it, that they didn't have in 1994 when I moved here, and had to go have the conversation with the post office about, why is it that we have to say South Deerfield when we live in Whately? Okay? This is actually possible for them to do, and I think conflating it with closures of, that, that decision is made, is, is a different decision. They could decide to close the post office independently of whether we ask for a single zip code or not. Thanks.
All right, Larry, you'll be the last person speaking on this matter.
Larry Cutner, 37 Laurel Mountain Road. At a previous town meeting, there was a alternative proposal that the post office be asked to accept East Whately for addresses in the South Deerfield Post Office delivery area, and I was wondering if there was a reason that proposal was not being considered.
That's just not the article that's before us for a vote today. Anyone is welcome to bring forward a petition at another time, should they think that's a good idea. We would have to vote again to extend discussion. All right, in that case then, unless there's some clarification that needs to be made, I thank everybody for their, their points of view that are expressed, and I think we're ready to take a vote. I need vote counters for this, and I wonder if I could ask Joyce and Fred to be the counters for this here. Divide up the people as you see fit. I would suggest that the dividing line be on our side, to the left of Neil Abrams, down that corridor there, but including everybody in the front row.
Okay, so if like Sean Allen, Neil Abrams draws a straight line through there to the camera, maybe?
That's right, yeah. Okay. Neil, thank you for allowing yourself to be the point of reference. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand high and keep it up.
You're getting that, which side are you getting?
I'm going to take the left side.
Okay, so what do you have?
I have 18.
18.
I've got 28.
Plus 28.
Oh, I'm sorry, plus myself, 19.
Okay. 19 plus 28 in favor. And now those opposed? Okay, there's 47 in favor and 32 opposed. And so the motion, which requires a majority vote?
Yeah.
It's a majority or two-thirds?
It's two-thirds.
No.
No, for an advisory.
No, majority.
Majority.
So the, the advisory article is carried. Thank you. The second is an article, Nancy Tolanian is the lead petitioner, and I invite Nancy to read the article. I have been asked of what the policy is for amendments to language. The Roberts Rule's orders are as follows. If somebody wants to propose a change in the wording, we're not able to do friendly amendments here because it's a multi, multiple citizens sign on to the document to put it on the board, but you can vote to amend something, and then that requires a certain percentage vote, and if that passes, then your discussion is on the amended article. If it fails, you revert to the original article, but you still need a vote on the original article. All right, so whether you vote to amend or not simply changes, or doesn't change what the wording is, it is not the vote on the article itself. All right. So Nancy, please, please begin.
Just to clarify, you want me to read this, or speak to it?
Well, it is, it is your option. Is there anyone here who feels a need for the article to be read in full, and it is your entire right to ask for that? Okay. Apparently not.
All right. Nancy Tolanian, 19 Poplar Hill Road. Passage of the ceasefire resolution would add Whately's voice to those of cities and towns in 28.
Oh, sorry, hold on a second. We first need to ask you to move the article and have a second.
Oh, okay. I move that we vote on Article 31, a resolution to end the war in Gaza.
Is there a second? There is a second, okay. Now we're ready for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the ceasefire resolution's intention is to add Whately's voice to the voices of cities and towns in 28 states, including in Massachusetts, where resolutions have been passing in large cities, including Boston and Cambridge, and in small towns, including Charlemont, Greenfield, and Northampton. Since Hamas's brutal attack last October, President Biden has authorized over 100 arms transfers to Israel, and Congress has agreed to his request for $14.3 billion in military aid for Israel. Massachusetts taxpayers' share of those weapons is $493 million. And I mention those figures not to question Israel's right to defend itself, but to point out that some of those weapons our tax dollars have funded have been used in what the UN and others have called crimes against humanity. So I hope there will eventually be a ceasefire agreement, but there's no way to predict how long it's going to take, and how many more innocent civilians, including Israeli hostages, may die, be maimed, or starved to death before that happens. And for that reason, I ask you to vote yes on this resolution to send a message to President Biden and our federal legislators that Whately Town Meeting supports a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And anyone else want to speak to this article? It would help if you can line up at the microphones. Thank you, Brant, please.
Branchigus, 25 Gray Oak Lane.
Can you tilt the microphone just up a little bit? There, great.
It's not popping off. Okay, thank you. So I sincerely respect the good intentions of my neighbors, who've banded together to put this resolution on tonight's warrant. Nonetheless, I'm opposed to it, and I intend to vote against it. My mother frequently reminded me as I was growing up that the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and I feel that it is my view that the road that this, that the adoption of this resolution would put Whately on, is a path we would be best not to take. put Whately on is a path we would be best not to travel. Now, I have a lot of issues with the way this resolution is written. I came prepared to regale you on what those are, but in fact, I'm not going to do that, not just because I'm still sweating, but rather because I don't believe town meeting is the time or place to be wrangling over wording. So let me not tell you how I would change it if I even could. Speaking as one person and maybe the only one person here tonight who may, who will vote against this resolution, I'm also concerned that were this resolution to be adopted here tonight, the way it's written, the way it would be conveyed as the voice of town meeting, would not properly convey the fact that it was not unanimous. And there may have been some number of votes, maybe only one vote opposed to it. Let me also say one thing, that although I'm opposed to this motion, and I'm going to vote against it, I don't want anyone to think for one moment that that's because I, I'm all for war, or indiscriminate bombing, or the killing of children, or that I'm an Islamophobe, or that I just love a good genocide. None of this is true. And I don't think any of that needs to be true for a person of good faith to be opposed to this resolution. To continue, here's my real point. I do not believe that articles like this, which deal with complex issues far beyond the borders of our town, our county, our region, and our state, are appropriate for consideration at Whately's town meeting. Let's not start down a path where town meeting becomes a forum for litigating all the many horrible things that members of the human species perpetrate against one another. The conflict in Gaza is a tragedy, but it's just one of countless such debates we could be having that I think we should not. In my view, town meeting is for three things, and three things alone. One, deciding how much money we're going to spend on town government and municipal services. Two, what we're going to spend it on. And three, most importantly, approving zoning bylaws. It's not for business like this. Thank you.
All right, thank you Nancy and Brent. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'll say Paul, and then you, sir. Okay. We have about four minutes left on this.
I'll be very brief. When I look at the article, I have to, I know Brent didn't want to say it, but I'll say it. It's poorly written. There is no war on Gaza. If you wanted a ceasefire, if you wanted us to vote on a ceasefire between Israel and Gaza, that's another thing. But to have our elected officials look at this, there is nothing to act on. There is no official war on Gaza. So I'm not sure why this was written this way, but it really doesn't pass muster.
Okay, thank you. Paul, sir, please identify yourself.
Jerry Lemon, 27 Gray Oak Lane. And I appreciate the two comments of my predecessors in speaking. My greatest concern is that we are all citizens of a constitutional republic. We are not a town and a democracy that has a way to act like this in terms of communicating how we feel the country should be run. We should be speaking with our representatives in Congress, with the president, et cetera. This document is filled with what I believe are personally inaccuracies and inflammatory. And I don't think the town needs to be anywhere close to this in adopting it as a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the succinctness of people's opinions as they're expressing them.
Neil Abram, 184 Chestnut Plain Road. I will vote against this because I don't think it is a mode to achieve influence on bringing peace. It does not properly identify the initial atrocities and fault them. It does not identify all of the atrocities since then. And I feel, as did the previous speaker, that we should be communicating with our representatives. And all citizens should use their opportunity to voice their concerns for those who actually have influential votes over US government policy.
Thank you. Jonathan?
I just want to echo what Brent said. This topic is incredibly important, but in no way is it impactful to how we run our town. It's not a good use of our taxpayer dollars, or it's not a good use of the people's time who's at that table. Again, it's incredibly important, and we should take our voice to places that, that will really listen. But it's not the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Fran, are you next? Okay.
I'm Ed Berman, and I live at 60 Masterson Road. There is a war in Gaza, and there is a war in Israel. This is not the place to assess blame one way or the other. The reality is that thousands and thousands and thousands of people are dying, mostly children and women in Gaza. They're dying because Israel has an overwhelming military advantage. This is in no way to exonerate Hamas from being a horrific, deadly, dangerous entity that doesn't need, need to be neutralized. In the 30s, those of us who know about the 1930s, people were afraid to speak up. Well, we know what happened throughout the 30s, and we know what happened in the 40s. And then people all of a sudden decided after the war, maybe they should speak up. But where were they when the time was needed to perhaps avert or to at least alert the world or part of the world about what was going on? To say that this is not Whately's business is, of course, fatuous. Morality is everyone's business. Now, whether you like the Israeli position, or the Palestinian position, or the Gaza position, is in some ways irrelevant. The position is that people are dying, and people must be made aware of that. And any local or national contribution that's being made by us, by our government, must be noted as loudly and as clearly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We're at time. Fran, do you want to make a motion for another five minutes, or would you like to?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those, this requires a two thirds vote for, for another five minutes. All those in favor, raise your card. Okay. All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Sunset is still happening at the same time, I remind everyone.
Okay. Yes, Fran Fortino, 19 Poplar Hill Road. Somewhat biased on this article, but I have a reason to be.
You'll be granted extra time for the train?
With all due respect to the train.
Just speak really loudly into your microphone.
Yeah.
With all due respect to my friends and neighbors who've spoken against this article, perhaps they have not seen all the videos and pictures of the hospitals, churches, water facilities, thousands of homes in Gaza that have been rendered to rubble by bombs made in the USA. For that reason alone, I think we have a responsibility to raise our voices. And this is, as Ed mentioned, an appropriate forum. Why should we be quiet, be told to be quiet when we have this forum? It's a free country. That's why we have the opportunity to speak. I would like to say that it would be wonderful if we added our voices to the millions of people who have already done so, voiced their concerns against this war in the US, around the world, and in Israel itself. This petition simply says, we ask our elected officials to please do all you can to put in place a ceasefire and end this war that has cost thousands of lives, thousands of innocent lives on both sides. I hope we have the courage to pass this resolution. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Fran. We have one minute left. Is there a new voice with a new point to raise? Yes, please go ahead. We will, I will acknowledge your request after this person speaks. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just, Paul Newland, 148 Conway Road. I just wanted to take issue with some of the comments that would have us abdicate our right and our duty as Americans to use our voice on any issue that concerns us, no matter how big, no matter how small. That's the essence of democracy. Town meeting is the most democratic institution we have. We must cherish it, and we must use it, and we must allow everyone to partake in it and to express their opinions and to argue with them if necessary. Thank you.
We're now actually at the end of our allocated time, and so there's no need for a vote to call the question. We will actually proceed to a vote at this point. And I'd like the same two able-bodied select board members to do the counting for us there, please, in the same way as before. Let me know when you're ready. Okay. And so all of those in favor of Article 30 is read. Please raise your card and leave your hand up so it can be counted. Article 31, sorry. And you'll get the people behind as well. Okay. Okay, and your number for? 17. Okay, so there's 32 in favor. All those opposed, raise your card. Okay, 33 in favor. 33 in favor, 31 against. So the article has a majority support. And we now turn to Article 32. It's the last article on our warrant. And invite Jessica Corwin, the lead petitioner. We need to vote to allow Jessica to speak to this article. All those in favor, please raise your card.
Can we also include Aracely McCoy and Josephine Silva, who are too young to vote at this time?
Yes, anyone who's either not a resident or not a voter needs to be invited. So we're inviting those three. And you've, once again, please raise your card in favor or against. Thank you. You are all invited to speak.
Hello, my name is Aracely McCoy. I live in Whately, and I'm going into the eighth grade at Frontier Regional School.
Oh, yes, one second. Sorry for the formality, but your first thing you need to say is I move Article 32, and then someone here will, will need us, will need us, will need a second and.
I move Article 32.
Second.
Okay, is there a third, just in case? Okay.
I am one of the students who worked on the citizen petition to lower the voting age to 16. Allowing the other, along with other friends and adults, we have gathered signatures to put this issue into the town meeting warrants for Sunderland, Deerfield, Conway, and Whately. Sunderland and Conway both passed this measure this spring. Deerfield came within three votes of passing it at their meeting. My friends and I think that going, giving voting rights to the 16 and 17 year olds would be good for everyone because it would give us, it would get us in the habit for voting before we get even busier, making it more likely that we will vote consistently as adults. We would like, we, sorry, we would get to learn more about town politics and town meetings while we still live in our home communities where we already care about the issues around us. I know that some people think that 16 is too young to be responsible enough to vote. I wonder if you believe that 18 year olds are responsible enough. What about 25 year olds? Knowledge and experience are not requirements for voting eligibility. 16 year olds have many adult rights in Massachusetts, including working a full-time job, paying taxes, getting married, driving a car, and owning and running businesses. They are subjected to all of these laws, but have no say in making them.
Hi, my name's Josie. I live, I'm also going into eighth grade at Frontier. If this article passes, Whately's select board will ask Natalie Blay and Paul Mark to file a home rule petition with the state legislature, which must be approved before 16, 17 year olds can actually start voting here. Other towns and cities have filed similar petitions with the state with any, without any response, and they hope that adding our Frontier Regional towns to this group will force the legislature to act. In other words, the town of Whately could eventually be the reason that teenagers in Boston, Cambridge, Brooklyn, Southborough, and Northampton get to vote in their own municipal elections. In towns and cities where the voting age has been lowered to 16, including Maryland, Colorado, California, and most recently Vermont and New Jersey, for voter participation has been increasing in all age groups. Here in Frontier Regional School districts, officials and educators have expressed interest in providing public workshops for all ages about voter registration, the roles of local offices, town meetings, how to research candidates, and more. If voting rights are guaranteed to 16 and 17 year olds, this petition would not allow people under 18 to vote in state or federal elections, nor run for office. Please vote yes on this article to build current and future democratic engagement in Whately and beyond. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for welcoming us tonight. I'm Jessica Corwin, Chair of the Sunderland School Committee and a member of the Frontier School Committee. I'll make this really brief. The Whately and Frontier School Committees unanimously supported this petition by a resolution passed at our joint school committee meeting in April, along with Sunderland and Deerfield. Conway didn't have a quorum that night. We borrowed language from another town's petition where they do not have a town meeting like this. The intention of this petition is to include town meeting for 16 and 17 year olds, allow them to vote. I'll leave it up to you whether you would like to amend this before you vote on it. And because this is not our first rodeo, this is our fourth rodeo this spring, very quickly address some arguments we could anticipate. First of all, if you're concerned that all teenagers would vote the same way, or would vote the way that their parents tell them to, I would like to gently invite you to hang out with a group of teenagers. Madam Town Clerk, do you happen to know how many 16 and 17 year olds currently reside in Whately? Okay. It, I think it was like 64 in Deerfield. If you scaled that down, it was like 30 something in Sunderland. It's not big numbers. And finally, if you pass this and the state legislature acts, and 16 and 17, 17 year olds are allowed to vote in municipal elections and town meetings, they will not be forced to. They will not have their childhood stolen from them because this passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It is two minutes to sunset. I wonder if there's anyone who feels compelled to speak to this matter? Yes, please go ahead.
Paul Antea, 50 Weber Road, West Whately. I have a, I just have a question. Any of those speakers who are presenting this petition, do you live in Whately? One. Okay. And are you the individual who brought this petition forth?
We did it as a group. We did this for all four towns.
We did this for all four towns, hoping to enfranchise 16 and 17 year olds from all of the Frontier Regional towns at once.
Well, that's wonderful. But this is Whately. This is not the
Well, that's wonderful. But this is Watley. This is not the other three towns. And to think that we are going to bring a law into effect from individuals outside the town is something that I've never seen at this meeting in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this question? Ma'am, please go ahead.
Hi. I'm Beth Luke, and I'm from Michikowski Circle. I am 70 years old. I have been 16, and 17, and 18, and I can tell you that I did not have the wherewithal to make decisions that affect taxpayers, and I really don't think that it's an appropriate age to consider that privilege. Thank you.
Yes. Last speaker, please.
Amy Schrader, 315 Long Plain Road. I'm just curious if anyone has reached out to the state in regard to this for the voter registration system, which is linked to the RMB system. So right now, anybody under the age of 18 is called a pre-register. How are they going to differentiate them being able to vote in a local or state election?
I think, go ahead.
Those pre-registerants would only be allowed to vote in municipal elections. They would not be allowed to vote in state or federal elections. So there is this pile of petitions from various municipalities. I assume eventually they will be passed as a group, and that will be addressed at that time. The other petitioners include Boston and Lowell and some big municipalities. It will be addressed.
The state, Jonathan, at this point, we're, we're done unless you want to call for another five minutes.
I would like to call for 30 seconds and an answer.
Granted.
Am I correct? This is just a home rule petition. We're not changing anything here. We're just allowing the process to move forward. And then the home rule petition, if my graduate degree in public administration from UMass carries forward, the home rule petition would then allow us to make an understandable decision based upon all facts, based upon whether we want to do this or not. Correct? The home rule petition would be voted on in the future. That's what would be the deciding factor in, if everything has changed for 16- and 17-year-olds. Correct?
Yeah, it's correct. This is simply advisory.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, then, I would like, once again, to have our vote counters. A good hand for them, please. Thank you. If you ever asked, "When am I going to use this math again?" Here's your answer. Okay. All those in favor, please raise, oh, and I also want to acknowledge, before we have the vote, the article was moved by at least two residents of the town of Watley and put on the warrant by the legal process required for the town of Watley. So it is a legitimate article for voting and for consideration. So thank you. All those in favor, please raise your card. Does that include you or not? Including Julie? Okay. That makes 41 in favor. Those opposed, please raise your card. All right. 25 opposed. So the article passes 41 to 25. Before we adjourn, I'd like to make just a few ending remarks. The first is how, how proud I am of all of you for the way in which we carried out this discussion, which is clearly something that is strongly felt compassionate for both sides of that. And therefore, I hope that the vote totals will be conveyed, as well as simply the for or against, in the conversations that go forward. In the case of the zip, that, that this is on the presumption that the, we hold, that we would still have a town post office, right, and that there was a heartfelt expression for that. On the vote regarding Gaza, that people were, you know, that there was a majority in favor, but it was clearly something that, where there was strong representation on those sides. And on this last one here, that we definitely want to convey to our representatives of the town supports this idea and hopes that they'll take into consideration any of the concerns that, any of the concerns that were raised. So, well done, all of us, for ending on time. The moon is high in the sky, and there are many more gnats than the one at this podium.
And I will move to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, raise your cards as high as you can. All opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.